Evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are here for a city council budget process study session. And if the city clerk will call a roll.
I'll probably do the pledge of allegiance first.
Okay, why don't we do the pledge of allegiance first?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Councilperson Bear?
Here.
Dupree is not here. Ross?
Here.
Salsito?
Here.
Soor?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor Higgins?
Okay. And with this, I'm going to turn us over to our city manager/budget director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the recommended budget for fiscal year 2024-25. I'll do a brief overview of the budget. You do have the full budget documents review. The budget will be adopted in June, so there is time if there's any necessary changes that we need to make. I'll start talking a little bit about the budget process and how we develop the budget throughout the year. So in November and December, we send out the capital request forms and have them completed by the departments. So these are large ticket items, vehicles, upgrades to buildings, those types of things that are generally large dollar amounts. So we have them start off by submitting those requests. And then December into January, the departments go into the general ledger system and they enter their budget requests for the upcoming year. For the majority of items, there are some items, the employee personnel items, health insurance, those types of things, we enter those on our side. And then in March, we'll meet with the departments, go over the requested budget, talk about any changes that may be necessary, any items that possibly can't be funded or may be moved to a future year. And then that brings us to tonight for the budget presentation. And May 28th, we'll hold the budget public hearing that is required by law before we adopt the budget on June 10th. The general fund is the main operating fund of the city that we generally talk about. And for this upcoming year, I am pleased to say we have another balanced budget. The revenues are projected at 27,366,315, and the same for the expenditures. There was a lot of work that went into getting a balanced budget. The last four to five years, we've been very fortunate. There have been some increases with general operating, utilities, those types of things, but nothing major this year. Last, or the current year that we're close to finishing up, the revenues are projected at 26,859, and the appropriations is 26,789. And we are estimating zero use of fund balance again this year. And just to talk a little bit about the fund balance and where we're at, so this is a snapshot of our ability to pay our obligations. So the 2023-24, which is the current year we're in, the starting fund balance is at 7.8 million, which is about 29%. And we're projecting it to stay right there at 29%, just over 7.9 million. And if we have zero use of fund balance for the recommended budget, we'll stay at that 7.9 million or the 29%. And as you may or may not recall, a few years back, council did adopt a fund balance policy maintaining over 20%. So that gives us sufficient cash flow to continue paying our bills. Towards the end of the fiscal year when taxes aren't coming in, we need to make sure we have cash in the bank to pay payroll and all our vendor payments. On the revenue side for this year, the overall revenue, there's not any major changes. Property taxes are projected to have a slight increase again once again. The building department revenue and the code enforcement revenue, which, as you recall, this is the first year of the code enforcement, those revenues are staying pretty level for the upcoming year. And there's no significant changes to revenue sharing. We have been fortunate the last couple of years to see some increases there. On the expenditure side, the expenditures are going up about 658,000 over the current year. Much of this is due to the new animal shelter, which I'll get into a little bit later, and the employee costs. As you know, we've settled some contracts and there's normal obligations within those contracts that cause an increase. Those are the largest items this year. There is some slight increases in the buildings and grounds budget, mostly for building maintenance. Parks and forestry division, we've allocated a little bit more money this year. We are trying to do some more cleanup in the parks. And then we continue to fully fund the MERS and the police and fire pensions. Those contributions did go down quite a bit this year. My police and fire contributions down about 481,000, and the municipal 285,000. And we are once again meeting our obligation for retiree healthcare and keeping it under that 6% cap, which was part of the settlement agreement. And the other departments of the city have all remained pretty stable. So now I'll talk a little bit about the animal shelter. That's the biggest obstacle this year with the budget was the animal shelter and trying to develop a budget for that. We've funded a pretty small animal shelter over the last several years. Costs have remained pretty low. We have employee costs in there, but overall, we haven't had a lot of animals in there to feed and house. And of course, now that we're bringing cats in, that puts a whole new light on the budget. So we've worked pretty closely with the police department and Kennedy over at the animal shelter. She's done a good job. She helped us develop some numbers on how much it's going to cost to feed the cats and how much kitty litter we need, those types of things. So I did do a little screenshot of what the budget looks like. So for the current year, it's at 100,000, and the recommended budget's at 295,000. So that's quite a substantial increase, which I don't know if you recall, back when the shelter plans were being drawn up, there was a lot of concern over how much the shelter was going to cost to operate each year. And now we're going to see it. So the next slide, I broke it down a little bit more just to see the expenses have increased $200,000 or 66%. And that's a conservative number. Staffing now will include two full-time employees and four part-time. We currently have one full-time and two part-time. And volunteers will be critical in order to operate the shelter. We may at some point have to look at increasing maybe the part-time staff over there. It's all going to be a work in process over the next year. There's many items in the budget, utilities that we just don't know, food, supplies, and vet care. We've estimated all of those numbers, done a pretty good job of trying to determine how much it would cost for the required number of cats and dogs that we'll have in the shelter. And there may be times when we have to turn away some animals if it's becoming too costly. So we'll just have to evaluate it as we go. Staff did, like I said, did a lot of research. They helped develop the budget. And there's just many unknowns with the animal shelter. So right now, at 66%, we had cut that back from what the original estimates were. There are a lot of donations that come into the shelter, so that's helpful. And then we didn't have the true cost of what the discount may be if we're ordering large quantities of food, much more than we get now. And just to talk a little bit about the capital items in the budget, this is a highlight of some of them. It's not all of them, but it's a good majority of the general fund capital for the budget. The ice arena heater replacements are 50,000. DPS building exterior paint, 40,000. The court door replacement, we've allocated another 20,500. We had 20,000 in the current year, but those estimates came in much higher. DPS roll-up door replacement, 12,000. Some light replacements over there at 16,000. City park improvements, we did, there was a lot of desire to put some money into the parks. And the requests far outweighed what we could financially afford in full at this point. So we decided on $50,000 to start, so that will go towards equipment replacement in the parks. And we're hoping to find some grant funds as well to kind of match those dollars and put a large investment to one or possibly two parks this year. We do have a furnace replacement planned here in City Hall for 14,500. And then cameras, we're looking at camera options for City Hall, Parks and Rec, DPS, the animal shelter, as well as the busrooms at Council Point Park and Gregory Park. We have very old cameras here at City Hall. DPS, I don't believe, has any right now. But we have had to use them here at City Hall in the past when there's been incidents that happened. So we need to get something that we can actually go back and view and use if we need them. Hopefully, we don't need them for anything, but it'd be nice to have the ability. So we're looking at options for those right now. And then we are once again funding the sidewalk replacement program at $200,000. Now I'll talk a little bit about the other funds of the city. So these are special revenue funds. The major and local funds is your road funds, and that is funded by the gas tax that we collect from the state. So as they collect it, they allocate back to the city based on the miles of roads we have for both major and local. So this year, for major roads, the revenue's projected 3.8 million, and the expenditures right about the same. Local roads, 2.2 million, and the expenditures are the same for that as well. And within that budget, we do have $390,000 budgeted for tree trimming removals, which is up, I believe, about $90,000 from the current year. And then we have $2 million funded for improving the roads. So that goes along with the road bond fund. So those combined are what goes into replacing the roads, the mill and overlay, all of those types of things. And then just to talk a little bit about how much we've invested just from Act 51 road funds alone over the last five years. I did a little history here, going back to fiscal year 2021, and we've put over $12 million just out of Act 51. So if you were to combine that with the road bond fund, you can see, even though our roads still need a lot of work, we have invested a lot of money into them. And the water and sewer fund, this year or next year, the revenue's projected at just over $18 million, and the expenditure's at 17.3 million. We are recommending a rate increase of about 4.5%. There could be a slight adjustment to that prior to the adoption of the budget, once we get the final numbers in, but it should be right around the same. Due to ARPA, SRF, and other grants that we've received, we have been able to cut down on the rate increases the last two years. As you know, we have had a cash shortfall in the water and sewer fund for several years. So the last year was the first year that we actually had positive cash flow in that fund, which is what we need to continue to do. But the capital investments that are needed within that fund are just substantial, and the rates would skyrocket if we were to do everything at once. But we've been very fortunate with all of the ARPA funds that have come through and the various SRF grants that we've gotten that we're able to allocate much more into the system than we would be able to on our own. We do have the staffing increase in the water department. This is to allow for the start of the leak detection and the valve maintenance program, which falls right into the water loss and the shortfall in the cash flow of the water and sewer fund. So John has, I know previously spoke with Mayor and Council about this, sent out some information. So we are recommending to start that program up this next year, so they'll be able to hopefully detect leaks early enough and identify where they're at. That'll help us get a plan together rather than just always being reactive to water main breaks. As part of that, too, they're going to test the valves, so there'll be a valve maintenance program. And we can put together a plan for that and how we're going to address those in the future. And then staff in this area needs to, they do need to be specifically assigned to us. There may be times where they're pulled off and other things, but for the most part, this will be their main assignment so that we can. We've worked with Hennessy. I think this was proposed maybe two years ago, John. And it's a very good thing that we need to get going. And then I just did a screenshot of what the current water and sewer rates are for the various items. We have the water, the water capital, the regular sewer, sewer improvements, and the basin capital. So you can see there, overall, the rates are adjusted to about 4.5% increase. The sanitation fund is, as you know, we've had all of the rubbish issues lately, and we are going out for bid for a new contract, which is up. So my recommendation at this time is to keep the fees the same going into the fiscal year. Once we do get the bids back, we know the dollar amount that we're looking at for the upcoming year, then we can adjust the rates. I can bring back a resolution to Mayor and Council to adjust the rates in September, depending on how those come back. Just, you know, looking at it right now, it's kind of hard to justify changing it for just a few months. I would rather look at where we're going to be at over the course of the entire fiscal year, once we know the cost, and adjust the rates at that point. And with that said, the sanitation fund is projected at $3.1 million. Some of the other funds within the city are the cable fund. So those are the peg fees that are collected from the various cable providers within the city. There's a portion of that that goes to the general fund, and this right here is designated specifically for cable purposes. So any upgrades we have to make for broadcasting, it covers the cost of all of those types of items. Then we have the drug and forfeiture fund, the fleet fund, which is the motor pool fund, and the IT fund, which is the information technology piece for the servers, the computers of the city. Within the capital planning for the other funds, we are purchasing some undercover vehicles in the forfeiture fund. Act 51 funds, again, is budgeted at 2.7, or sorry, 2.07 million for infrastructure upgrades. ARPA funds, we have budgeted 6.8 million from previously allocated funds. That's the estimated amount we'll spend in the next year. And the fleet management fund, we'll purchase some patrol vehicles for the police department, cargo van. We build two dump truck bodies. We're looking at having to lease a new ice resurfacer for the community center, and there's some other capital items in there as well for vehicles. And that is the end of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any more specifics if Council wishes.
Since we've talked about the animal shelter quite a bit, when we started to talk about the animal shelter, we were talking about it may be big enough that we could bring in a partner. Is that something we're still talking about, or is that something that, are we waiting to see, or are we with that?
We've talked about it a little bit. I think what we're going to have to do is see our ability, how many animals we're going to be able to house within the staffing that we currently have. If we were to bring in additional animals from other communities, there may be additional staffing, we'd have to determine how much their cost would be. It's a possibility, but I wouldn't start off the new animal shelter until we have a grasp on what we're doing there.
Makes sense. Anybody have any questions?
I do. Building Department, code enforcement. I've driven through the city, and I see the code enforcement driving around, but I don't see them stopping.
Okay. There are billings that are going out for the code enforcement, so there is activity there. I know it's, there's been some obstacles. It's a new program, so trying to, everybody's trying to get their feet wet and figure out exactly what, some of the revenue coming into, if they're issuing citations or code violations, maybe something that they have to come in the building department for to get a permit. But now they're starting to target the high grass and those types of things.
My issue is, is we're not paying them to just drive around.
Absolutely not.
But when they, I think there's an issue between McKenna and then having somebody that's actually being the director of the department.
Well, the code enforcement, those employees in there are city employees, correct?
Correct. But what about the rest of the employees in the building department?
All of the other inspectors are McKenna employees.
We need to figure out a way to start bringing that in-house, whether it's one person a year or whatever.
Yeah, we've been talking about that.
I think it's creating huge issues.
I think everybody agrees.
And if they, I mean, and if we can't get them to work with us, then maybe we need to find somebody else.
Right.
I'm just throwing it out there.
We've been discussing that very actively, especially as of late.
So Lisa, can I, through the chair? Being that we're talking the building department, would it be, I know we've gone through numbers in the past with going in-house. How would that affect the budget if we did that, like, soon?
So last time that we ran the numbers for it, it was going to be a cost increase.
Right.
What the exact numbers are now, they have to be rerun. It's been maybe a year and a half, I believe. It was not significant. I mean, it was definitely an increase, but when you look at the overall budget of $27 million, it's nothing substantial.
It's nothing I don't think that we could, that we couldn't make up in what, you know, the performance, the improvements, you know, what we want to see out of the building department.
Right. And if they are more productive, that's more revenue coming in.
Right, right.
And then we offset the cost of the percentage that McKenna currently receives.
Yeah, I do believe, it's been more than two years since we voted to bring the building department back in-house. And I think it's definitely time we need to step up and start bringing in, you know.
Try again.
Try, you know. I know there have been, you know, there was COVID, and then there was some other issues that came up, and I think it's time that we put a fire to trying that again.
And it does not seem that the vendor, even after there's discussions about things that are not getting accomplished to the city satisfactory, there's, doesn't seem to be much improvement. And if there is, it's very short term.
Yeah, there's no reason to keep moving forward like that.
No, there's certain issues that are just not being taken care of.
We're not happy.
You know, we had movement on it, and it abruptly stopped. And we all kind of know why that stopped. And I think it's time that we just move forward and start doing the interviews again and get that moving, because it's frustrating and it's not called for. I mean, if we have employees that are representing us through a contract and they're telling the department head, "No." Blatantly, "No, I'm not going to do that," well, then they need to just be escorted out.
Right. And I've, in the past, had employees in finance that were contract employees from time to time, and I've never had that issue. So I'm not sure why it's always such an issue. I mean, this is a whole department we're trying to run. You should be able to.
I agree.
They should be following.
They just need to be told to leave when they do that. You know, if you're not going to do what we need done and what John has planned on you doing to get this done, then you don't need to be here.
How fast can you rotate?
Well, we had a plan when we talked about it last time of doing it staggered, because to upheaval the entire department at once would be a lot. So you'd be talking about hiring three office staff and we have maybe four inspectors all at once, and to bring them all on the same day would be, so we talked about staggering it, maybe like two employees at a time. So we need to get our plan together, reevaluate it, see exactly what we need to do, how fast we can. And of course, it's all, you know, we have to advertise for the positions, we have to bid them out internally first, then advertise and hope that we get some good candidates. That always seems to be the biggest hangup here.
To the chair? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And to add to the upheaval, our new building officer that we will be getting shortly, hopefully. When it comes to the DPS staffing increase for the leak detection project, I want to know, was there any other discussion given to bringing other items potentially in-house? And I'm thinking about the spray patching program, which has been talked about a little in the past. And as often as the case, it was always a manpower issue, and I was just wondering if that was involved in the scope as well.
We did not talk about the spray patching program during the budget this year, no.
To the chair, did you discuss possibly bringing anything else from the DPS back in-house, like cutting the grass?
I don't even know that cutting the grass has been thrown out there, to my knowledge. We would have to buy all new equipment. We don't have any of that equipment any longer. Right now, we were trying to focus on the water loss.
Through the chair. Lisa, since you said water loss, reminded me of the pressure relief valves. Are we doing that project with, still with ARPA money?
That's the, ARPA funding is designated for that, yes, yes.
Are we, how close are we with that?
John? How close are we on the pressure relief valves?
That was a topic between myself and Mr. Howlandworth this morning.
Can you go to the microphone? No, Carrie just leaves her stuff anywhere, you know. We could have a fire sale. Well, that was one of the things that I discussed with Mr. Howlandworth this morning. And unfortunately, we were hoping to put our backflow prevention into GLEWA, their water meter vaults. And originally, they told us they had room enough for one in one of their vaults, and we would have to purchase an additional vault to put our backflow prevention into another vault and put that in place. That has since changed. Now GLEWA is telling us, "No, we're not going to allow you to put your equipment into our equipment." So that means we have to now purchase a second vault. And one of the things with doing that, it's an added cost. We do have, I believe, approximately $500,000 of ARPA money available for that. And I would think that majority of that money is still there. Now it comes down to purchasing the equipment and then installing the equipment. But I think we still need to do this. But right now, if you recall, the last time I was here with Hennessy doing a report, they'd indicated that they'd expected to go, come back in approximately three weeks. That isn't going to happen for a little while yet. We still need to complete that. And personally, I think we're right at the cusp of coming back to this body, asking for your concurrence to purchase the vaults, which there would be two of them, and the equipment, and then having it installed. And I still think we can do it under the budget dollar amount. But now, if I could, since I'm up here, one of the things that we could possibly do with taking back the trees, we have, I think it's approximately $270,000 in the budget. We could do that, but we have a one-year contract presently with the existing tree contractor. But we could, I think we could do that with bringing in four people. But that was not proposed to this body, because what I did send out to all of you is maybe bringing the lead service, bringing the lead service crew. And I think that could save the city, if I recall, I thought it was about $20 million. It's a lot of money. And it would be a 20-year process. You'd have to bring in approximately five people and the associated equipment. But I think it could be, save the city a lot of money. But that one, I think the city's a little bit fearful of trying to take on that process or that big process. And as far as the spray patching, we have, through this body, another year with that particular contract or contractor. But that wouldn't start until July 1st, when we got the money. Last year, I think the way they did it and the way you did it was on the city's behalf. I think we had a lot of accomplishment. Councilwoman Rossman brought up some of these spray patch locations have failed. That contractor said they would come back and they would re-spray patch those, plus another, I think it was 1,000 tons of material for next year's program. And what we're looking at is where to, where to apply that. Now, a good thing, which is included in the budget, is continuing with the sidewalk program at $200,000. Unfortunately, we've gotten a couple of issues out there now that may haunt us in the future, but that's a good program to keep. So if we could get some additional people, but I have not gone forward with the city manager on trying to get anything other than that. And she's been, she's going to concur and try to get this leak detection and valve turning. And I think that will help out, otherwise I wouldn't be all for it, will help out with water loss because a lot of our water loss is when we have a water main break to equalize the pressure so that guys are not trying to go down into the hole, a water main hole at maybe 50, 60 pounds of pressure. If we can get these valves coming back, it'll help us out tremendously. So right now, the bite that we're trying to take out of this is more than enough for me to try to handle because we still have another couple of years of grant money that's going to require a lot of babysitting. And we have to get all this accomplished before we lose this money. This year, if you recall, we're already awarded a water main contract. We have another one that's coming back before you, which will be another one that we have to maintain and oversee. And then we also have the two pump stations, which equate out to be approximately just shy of, of $11 million, and we've got to get that executed and done. So, so far, what, a lot of what I've been talking about is something that we already have in the process of trying to take care of. But I think that this water main valve turning process and leak detection will be a good step up or step into for trying to safeguard or reduce our water loss. Any other questions?
Through the chair? I'm not sure if, if John could answer this, maybe Lisa. But I'm curious with the two, it's two new positions, right, for the leak detection?
And shifting one other position that's already in place.
So will those be, will we go out in-house first for those? Like, will people from the water department be able to bid those?
Yes, they'll be union positioned, so we have to post them first.
Okay. All right, so not necessarily will they be?
Brand-new.
Yeah, okay.
Or it could be a mixture of both.
Through the chair.
Yes. I haven't been overly impressed with our hiring process, you know. I think it takes way too long, you know. We need to figure something out. It shouldn't take two or three months to find out if you got a job, you know. When we're looking for people, I think we need to be able to get people fairly quick.
I know you've, you've mentioned that before. I think Justina went over some of the process with you to, to show it's, it depends on the position, but it's generally not two to three months. There's a testing requirement, so we, once we advertise, if somebody applies, they have, they're required to test. So once that test comes back, then the process goes into the interview phase and background checks, physicals, because we do have all of the pre-employment screening that we have to do.
Is that something that we can ask, that you keep us informed when you do your reports?
Yeah.
For us, that you can say, you know, here, here's where we're at, you know, we've?
As far as which positions are open and what the process is?
Well, yeah, we're two weeks out, you know, we're three weeks out.
Yeah, I can give you a general, if I say two weeks out and it turns into three, you know, or if it may be one. Just so, sometimes the background checks generally go pretty quick, sometimes the physical, we have to wait. If there's, there's sometimes, they have to go back to the clinic for something and get more information.
Does everybody have to have the, the expensive testing for the?
DPS has the DOT requirement, so there's a little bit more involved than a clerical position where it's just the, the physical part of it.
Everybody you hire has to have?
At least in fire, they have a whole different process, so there's, is probably a little lengthier than ours.
Do the firemen have to have CDLs?
No, no, but they have other requirements they have to go to, go through in the process of hiring. It's different from a general employee.
I'm just looking to?
So Lisa, I'm sorry, could I ask, could I ask you, is, is there like a timeframe from, from the time that someone applies that someone reaches back to them, like, "Yes, you're moving on," or "Sorry, you don't meet the requirements"?
They generally, so if it's for an eligibility list, if we don't necessarily have a position open, if we're trying to get a list together of, say, DPS part-time staff, then they'll advertise and they'll wait until they have a few of them to come in and test together. If it's specifically for a position that we need to fill more immediately and we have a good candidate, they would move the process quicker.
We're not going to wait for several?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Through the chair. I know that you, when they do the tests, you have to wait for the test to be mailed in, and then they schedule the test, and then you mail the test back out, and then you wait for the test results to come in. That takes a minimum of two weeks, up to three weeks, maybe four weeks. That's ridiculous. There's no reason why our HR department cannot give somebody a test and grade their test that same day. There's no reason for us to be sending these tests back and waiting for them to come back and then sending them out again and then waiting to get a reply. There's just, I mean, I took that test and I waited almost three weeks to get the results. Why? Why can't our HR department, I mean, I understand the company has the results. There's no reason why you can't write a test and have the answers here and delay that big timeframe of people taking the test and waiting to find out if they passed it. That's just?
The purpose of using an outside party for it is so that there's no?
It's impartial.
Conflict of interest?
Right, right.
Test answers are test answers. They're either right or they're wrong. You know, I mean, if I, I can't see if someone takes a test and you're saying that you can't trust our HR department to grade it fairly? That doesn't make any sense. I mean, a three-week delay on taking a test and getting hired has probably cost us so many good employees.
I believe the turnaround time has gotten better.
That's just, to me, it's just absurd to wait and hold possibly really good candidates for jobs, to hold them up, because after they pass the test and they get the interview, they still have to go through all this other testing. So you're talking how many weeks to get employment? And we're losing candidates left and right, and by the time they do get employment, they're pretty much fed up already before they've even started the job.
I know there was a, a part-time employee recently that the turnaround time was very, very quick on that one. So I can do some more digging to see exactly, and report back to you guys exactly what the normal timeframe is.
Because it's, it's, you know, people are looking for jobs, they're, they don't want to wait four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks.
We've kind of gotten off the, some of the subject, but it is something that we needed to talk about and get, get out because I know this is something we've all talked about in the back room. But it's, since, since we are off the topic and we are talking about hiring, can you tell me where we are with CBDG Director?
Yep, so I have a folder of resumes, so in the next two days, the interviews will be scheduled.
That's good news.
Through the chair, Your Honor.
Yes.
You guys are done. Just a comment and then a question, okay? But in regards, Mr. Myers was up there at that podium about two, two years and two months ago, that he says eventually it would, if we got an in-house building department, there would be some curves, and it might be a little expensive at first, but eventually it would, it would help the city. But it was building season, and then that came off the table, and the rest is history that we talked about tonight. My comment is, in regards to the marijuana revenue, I know you, this booklet talks a lot about it, but I remember when it was coming up, they were saying, "Oh, the revenue could help fix the roads," but what specifically is the revenue from the marijuana shops going to?
It goes into the general fund, so it's?
Then you allocate it.
Right, right.
Do you know what the?
It's just over $100,000 is what we brought in this last year.
What's been the total of the last two years? Do you know offhand?
It's been, right, the year before was a little bit less. I can, I can find you this exactly, okay.
So there is money coming in generated from those shops.
Right.
We get approximately $50,000 per shop. We have two shops.
Gotcha. All right, so I want to know, people ask me about what we're doing with the revenue of the marijuana shops, and now you made it clear it's in the general fund. That's all I have, Your Honor, thank you. Good work on the budget, a lot of work. So I thank you for that. I look forward to reading this.
Thank you.
The next month.
Line by line?
Thank you.
It'll be a test.
Any other, any other questions for, for Lisa? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is everybody out there satisfied with their budgets? The department heads?
Don't ask me.
I had to ask.
Can they ever truly be?
Yeah, okay, because you get the option to ask, so I just figured I'd ask.
Oh, we already asked you that.
That's all I have.
Begged or asked.
And just thank, thank you for your work, your hard work, and for everything that you do.
Yes.
And I know that on top of this will be grant money too, so, and that's all thanks to you too.
And I do want to thank the department heads as well. They put a lot of work into the budget as well, every year, so. And they've all done a really good job in tracking spending, and for the most part, there's sometimes items beyond their control, but they all do a pretty good job of it.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you, Lisa.
Yes, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Okay, without any other further questions, do, do we want to get into the, the actual numbers tonight, or do we want to just wait and?
We could always, if council wishes to schedule another study session, if you want to get into more specifics, generally we'll do an overview.
I mean, if there's anything, anything, anybody jumps out right immediately, since we're here, we have the extra time. That's why I scheduled it on an off night, so we'd have a little extra time.
I just think, the thing to remember is that we still have EDC in here and DDA, and really don't have anything to do with that budget.
Right.
Did you get anything on the court?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet, no. The EDC, the DDA, and the library all adopt their own budgets, so they're, as long as they've adopted that, their budget, by the time we adopt the budget in June, there could be some slight changes if their board makes any different recommendations. This is, the budget within here is what the directors have entered as of yet, or as of today.
Now, Lisa, can I ask you too? When, through the building department, when tickets are paid through the building department at the court, do we see that revenue?
It goes through court revenue, same with police department tickets. It all goes through the money that comes back to us monthly in a lump sum. They do break out, the only thing they break out for us is the traffic division and something else at the police department. That's a small category, but no, we don't get the detail on?
Okay.
On building department revenue.
It's all general fund though, correct?
It is, it is.
Through the chair, Your Honor, since you brought this up, once the budget's passed, how soon can we see perhaps sidewalks being done, trees trimmed, basketball courts fixed at Gregory Park? How, how long, once the budget's passed, can we see some action? Because I know start cutting trees in July and sidewalks in July, we should be doing it now, but obviously, it's not in the budget, so how soon can we start this work?
So the sidewalk program is already, you know, that's already being lined up. If you want to come up and speak, yep. And as far as the trees go, as soon as the new budget year starts, John can start working with the contractor.
With the trees, once we, we've already got a list existing.
I agree.
Once July 1, or new budget year, the new money becomes available, whatever that contractor's schedule will allow, because you know, we're not the only client that they have. They've got DTE, they've got MDOT, and they've got others, and they, their home office is in Grand Rapids, so they work all over the state, Ohio and Indiana. I've already tried to prep them to come in July 2.
That's what I'm talking about.
Now whether or not they give us a gracious of doing that, because we've got approximately just shy of $300,000 for them, the sidewalk program, the way that operates is that money's available July 1 also. Go ahead and do your inspection, and you've got to send out the notice to those homeowners. They have 30 days to maybe get their own contractor, and if they do that, they pull a permit through the building department. If they don't, we'll put it on our contractor's list, so, and thereafter, they can start that work.
All right, thank you very much.
So it's not like it's a light switch and everything starts July 1. We've already started some of it, while we're not incurring the cost with outside forces, but we're trying to keep them going.
Thank you very much, John.
To the chair, wait. And he also asked about the Gregory Park and the basketball courts. That's from CBDG, it's paying for that, so that'll come from that budget, so.
Thank you.
The, when you talk about the trees and the sidewalk, the supposedly, they, the homeowners were told that there was a patch that they were going to paint over the, where they had to cut up the tree to make room for the sidewalk repair? Am I correct on that?
I'm not sure if I follow, please ask that again.
Where they cut the tree to install the new sidewalk. The homeowners were told that somebody was going to come back and put a paint or something to protect, to save the tree, so that people didn't lose their tree.
I'm not aware of that, but I'll investigate that.
Okay. I'll give you some addresses, I'll text them to you.
I'm just waiting to see if there's any more questions.
We're going to wait till you sit down.
That group won't let me stand back up. Matter of fact, they told me I could go home.
Oh, yeah, I think we're about done.
Does anybody have any more questions? We've asked this, now we know. Okay, with that, I will call it into the meeting.
So moved.
Support.
No, don't need no support, just leave.
There being no further discussion, the study session was adjourned at 7:45. Or 7:00.
Thanks for coming out on odd night, guys.
That would be 6:45.
6:45, sorry.
That didn't seem like it was that one.
6:45.